Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call to order the Arvada City Council Meeting Workshop for March 25th, 2025. Ms. Rush, if you'll do the roll call?
Here.
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 Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Rupert.
Here.
Thank you. We have one workshop this evening, and that is the acquisition of streetlight infrastructure. We'll go ahead and turn that over. Mr. Wick, I believe you're introducing the title?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, we are going to have a workshop on the acquisition of the city's streetlight infrastructure. And before I turn it over to Jason Tanco, who's going to give the majority of the presentation, I wanted to give you all a little bit of background, because some of the council members were not yet on council when we started this project. So back in November of 2020, the leadership team hosted a strategic planning process, and one of the outcomes of that was what we called AIPs, which were action initiative plans. One of those that was developed was to look at whether or not the city could acquire the streetlight infrastructure, and whether that would be economically beneficial to the city and our community if we were to do that. So through the AIP process, we set a series of goals, and we have been working on these, even though we started in 2020, as you know, we were going through COVID at that time, and part of this process got set aside for a couple of years. After we got through that and picked this project back up, we issued an RFP for professional services, which resulted in Tanco Lighting being selected as our contractor to work on the assessment of this. And tonight, Jason is going to take you through the process that we have gone through up to today to get us where we are now. And we included in the structure of this process decision gates. So all through this, we have been looking at go-no-go decisions. So for example, after we got the RFP issued, was this an affordable process for us to do? Yes or no? We made the decision, obviously, to go forward. The next decision gate was after our assessment was done, and the economic analysis was completed, was that a go or no-go on the staff side? The decision was to make that a go. Then the next piece was to look at whether or not maintenance of the system would be affordable for us. That was a go-no-go decision. And then where we are tonight will eventually become a go-no-go decision. And what we're looking for is an outcome tonight is whether or not the city council wants us to proceed with the next step, which is essentially to begin negotiations with Excel Energy for the acquisition of the streetlight infrastructure. So Tanco has completed the asset inventory and the financial analysis, and we are sitting now at that decision gate as to whether or not to move forward. And so tonight, what you're going to see is a very thorough summary of the economic analysis that Tanco completed. We do have the economic analysis report ready for the city council, that after tonight's presentation, we will get that out to you all, so that if you're interested in reading more of those details, that'll be available to you. So with that, I would like to introduce to you Jason Tanco, who is the CEO and president and owner of Tanco Lighting. And with that, Jason.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me over here. So I'll go ahead and walk us through. So first of all, we haven't been introduced, so just a little bit about us, so kind of understand the context of where we're coming from. So my name is Jason Tanco. I'm probably the biggest streetlight nerd you will ever meet. I love streetlights. I just, don't ask me why. I really don't know. It's, you know, I'm not going to use some analysis like it's the way I've been wired, but I just, it's always been the case. I just, some people are into cars, astronomy. For me, it was streetlights. So I am so fortunate. I'm able to work in something that I love every day, and this is kind of the result of where we're at so far. So our company is very unique. This is all we do is just street lighting. We're not a consulting firm, excuse me, a consulting firm who works on other things. It's only street lighting. Almost a million lights in contract. We've done a ton of acquisitions around the country. This is becoming more and more of a common thing. And fortunately for the Denver metro area, you guys won't be the first. In fact, you're quite a ways down the list. Something that's very unique about a consulting firm is we actually maintain streetlights. That'd be very unusual, because that'd be seen as more of like a contractor type of thing. But we've built such good relationships with our clients. We've had, you know, these cities and towns buy lights. They came back and said, you know what? I want you to maintain them. Usually, maintenance is seen as, you know, kind of like the dark cloud on the horizon. They haven't had to maintain lights. It's a very doable task, but that's why we got into maintenance, was to essentially help that kind of cold dip into now taking over the system. We can assist you with that. It could be just one year, two years. You don't even have to use this at all. But that's how we got into maintenance. And then the amount of projects nationwide, 270, we're probably very close to 300. So why is there streetlight? Really, what is the point of it? So I'm going to actually go down to what should have been the number one thing. It's for public safety. That is why lights are there. The streetlights help from collisions with other cars, seeing pedestrians and crosswalks, seeing potentially debris in the road. They're really solely there for public safety. The utility is currently supplying the lights, whether you knew that or not. For them, it's profit. But for you guys, you really need this as a way of keeping your streets safe at night, encourages nighttime activity, and it is just, it's just good for what people need. People always do want streetlights. So currently, getting back to the first bullet, you guys are paying a lot for it. The costs are very high. You're actually paying the most and probably getting the least. Currently, it's very much a reactive maintenance. Excel's not driving out the streets, looking for lights out, and then going to fix them. They rely on people to call in with those outages, and then they'll go fix them. So there's lights out tonight that you're paying on your bill that you're not getting, you know, that service for. So a benefit of owning and maintaining your own streetlight is control of the lighting design. That right-of-way is your space, the kind of fixtures you want to put up, the distance between those lights, how that streetscape looks. So by owning and maintaining those lights, that is something that will now, that control will turn over to the city. You'll get access to smart city technologies. This isn't as big and as Wild West as sometimes it turned out to be. There are good things that can come out of this, in terms of even making money for the city, or at least more pragmatic things through smart city technologies. But because you have that streetlight every so many hundreds of feet, there's very practical ways that now you can attach things to the streetlight and potentially get more out of that asset. You already control the right-of-way, so this is a streetlight right in the right-of-way. The irony is it's the one thing you guys actually don't currently own and maintain. The irony here as well, and maybe, maybe you did or did not know this, but if you were to poll people in the city of Arvada, they probably think you own the lights already. They're already calling in with outages and, hey, could you go fix this light? And then you got to call somebody else. And then you don't even know if it gets fixed. And then there's no incentive for even the utility to go fix it, right? Because you're still paying your bill. So this, this all falls in alignment with currently what taxpayers are expecting, and more or less what you're already doing. So the goal here would be to eliminate these administrative inefficiencies and create lower costs and more value out of the streetlights. So some, some of these benefits, we kind of covered, again, reduce costs, streetscape. I'll cover maintenance a little bit, a little bit later on here. But some additional benefits, poll banners that can go on the streetlight polls, even just identifying you're in the city of Arvada. Or, hey, there's a flea market, you know, this weekend. Or, you know, there's, you know, a production, you know, at the community theater. This is a way of showing civic pride by just putting poll banners, because now you'll own the poll. There's a possibility of dimming the lights. It's currently not reflected in the rate, but certainly outage notification. You could get notified tomorrow morning what lights were out and go out and fix them. Something that would follow more along with like the public safety side, at least with police, would be gunshot detection. By owning the streetlights, there's ways to triangulate, and in any areas where gunshots are a possibility, or more of a problem, I should say, you could be using the streetlights as a way of trying to curb that. Small cell, this is really where you would have an opportunity to make some money, because that streetlight that is in multiple areas around the city, in some cases, that's the tallest thing. And so small cell companies would want to come in, replace that pole, and make it a smart cell tower to increase cell reliability. Environmental sensors, we've seen like, you know, sensors put on the bottom of the light that will sense when the ground is freezing or air quality. So these are things that, you know, could now tie to, because essentially you have that power supply every so many hundreds of feet down the road through the streetlight. So kind of looking at global and bringing this into the Denver area, but, you know, around the United States, there've been a lot of acquisitions. You could see, you know, a lot, and it kind of hugs the coast, so a lot in the Northeast, you know, California, 85, you know, municipalities took over the streetlights. And by the way, these numbers on that list, no one sold them back. Once they buy, they keep them forever. No one sells their streetlights. So this list, no one had regrets and said, no way, I'm not going to do it. They all continue to own and maintain these lights today. So some of the more recent ones, and this is not a complete list, but Boulder, Erie and Windsor, they actually had two utilities, so they acquired from Excel and a public utility, and then Centennial. But there's more on this list, or more, I should say, than that list. So this is currently the project that we have with the city right now. We've completed phases one and two, the streetlight inventory. We went out and went poll by poll. I had somebody visit every streetlight in the city. And we collected all of this data. We compared it with the bills. And then from that, we did an economic analysis, looking at what options are to the city of should you buy, should you, should you buy and do this, should you buy and do that? So we'll be covering that. But that's essentially kind of where we're at. We're at a nexus point of, here's what the, the numbers say, what do we think? Moving on into some of the other phases, you could see there still would be negotiations if we wind up moving forward from this point. There is a process to separate and identify separation points with Excel. And then ultimately, streetlight operations and maintenance would need to be established. So when you guys take over the streetlight system, there's, you know, protocols of how to respond and how things get fixed. So you can see some of the completed phases. The RFP closed on July 6th, and then most of the work had been completed in July 2024. So this is the remaining phases. There are some additional recommendations. The RFP, there was a few other things that we feel could be necessary. So once you guys buy the lights, let's say that's what takes place, there'll need to be a conversion of the remaining fixtures. Not all the lights are currently LED. There's roughly about 2,000 that still need to be completed. That would be part of our recommendation, is have everything LED. City takes over. It's all an LED system. So an option would be, we would manage the construction phase of that. We put out to bid the material and install, and then oversee the conversion of the remaining lights. There's a master plan that we think the city should consider to communicate with developers, as well as city engineers, like how streetlights will be handled, who will do what, and then, of course, maintenance. So the economic analysis, we focused on just three options. The last option, option three, was just do nothing, right? You just don't buy the lights, you're just going to stick with it. The first two options, one was buy the lights and don't convert, just leave, leave what's there, or buy the lights and convert everything to LED. All right. So we're going to focus on the yellow box here, that option two. So if you move over a couple of spaces, you'll see that 1,445,671. That's currently what you're spending right now. So with Excel, it's almost one and a half million, and you don't own the streetlight system. So that's your status quo. If you take that over the next 20 years, your cost would be just under 32 million, that 31,832. So that's our baseline. That's our foundation. From there, that's where we'll pivot and look at, well, what options are there? So if you move to the next column, that 1,445,000, if you were to buy out the system and maintain it, that drops down to $245,000. That is a substantial amount of savings. So if you look at your long-term 20-year costs, instead of 31 or almost 32 million, your long-term costs over the next 20 years are actually just under 7 million, 6.9. That means that the city stands to save almost $25 million by taking over the system over the next 20 years. So you can see the percentage of savings off to the side, 83% and 78% respectively. So let's break it down to just one light. How, how is that possible? So this is the current published rate. So you'll see the red box on the left, that is for 100-watt fixture. It's a residential light, and it's like a, we call it like a deco, so it's like a little lantern on top. This represented 35% of the system. So Excel owns, maintains, does everything you want for that, but you pay $13.77 for that light. You'll write them a check, you'll buy the lights, that same fixture, everything, all in, drops down to $2.87. So that's how that bill goes down. I mean, you're just absolutely crushing what those monthly costs are. So this is an excerpt from that financial analysis. So let's start at the top with the bubble on the right. So you'll see there's $6,681,423. That is our estimated cost for the project. The city will have to spend that. The majority of it is just getting rid of Excel. You got to write them a check for what is the current book value and what price they're willing to sell at, which, by the way, is a miracle in and of itself. Utilities don't sell streetlights. This is such a fortunate position. But the fact that Excel is willing to sell its streetlights is an absolute advantage. So that's where, you can see from the, the next line down, the 20-year savings, 24,920. It's the same one from the other sheet. But and then the year-one analysis, again, some of these are just what you would find in that economic analysis when you review it. But essentially, your existing costs are 1.4 million. That drops down to 245, saving you 1.2 million. So something to think about is, this is such a unique project. I mean, you guys spend so much money in a year, and you don't really get much back for it. It's not like when you pave a road, you're getting tolls or something like that. This is such a rare opportunity. You're going to spend 6.6 million, and you're going to get something back. You're going to get a rate of return. That is just unheard of, because so much of what you guys spend is into infrastructure, where it just becomes a cost, or it has something that you guys have to maintain. So looking at maintenance, this is usually, for some people, where, you know, they kind of put on the brakes, or they get a little white knuckle, like, how am I going to maintain over 7,000 lights? So fortunately, that is what we're here for. We would not expect that you're just going to go from Friday, you own it, to Monday, you got to maintain 7,000. We really do feel like having us as an option is going to be your best way to at least observe from a safe distance, hold somebody accountable to make sure that the system is being cared for. And then maybe at some point in the future, you could take over the maintenance. But either way, no one is getting hired for this project. Zero. There's not going to be buying trucks and hiring electricians. Everything should be outsourced. So we believe that through the procurement process, we would hire a contractor through the city, and then that contractor would give us rates, and then they would be deployed to go out and fix the lights. And in this idea, Tanco would be the one to manage that contractor, make sure the bills are correct, lights are getting fixed, coordinate any outages with Excel. So this is a very doable task. No one, you know, this is about, you can see on that last one, it's about making the government more efficient, not bigger. So no one has ever had to do, you know, do that, hire people, or, and it's very rare anybody's even brought the maintenance in. Most people just stay with it on the outside, because with an LED system, there is less to do to it. You're just not going to be that busy. So the next steps, proceed with the ownership transfer. That's those phases three, four, and five of the current contract. We do think, once you then own and maintain, there'll need to be a maintenance contract in place, because, you know, once you, once you take it over, you got to be able to respond. But once you also take over ownership, we think we should proceed with the LED conversion. Get all the remaining lights converted to LED, because maintenance on non-LED fixtures is more expensive. You want to get them to LED. And then you can see some of the other recommendations with potentially looking at a master plan, and then again, maintenance. So that's it.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate it. I just had a couple of questions. Talk to me about solar lights, because I know we've had, I believe we've had some in the city. We've had some challenges with that. Is the technology evolving, getting better?
Solar has made a lot more sense when the cost for utility to get power to that location is really expensive. My concern around solar is just the investment you won't get back. You could be spending thousands of dollars. You really won't see the savings by the time the equipment breaks down. Unfortunately, solar, a lot of it is still coming in offshore from Southeast Asia. And I just don't think that the quality is there. But even if you look at the economics of the useful life, the useful life of a solar fixture compared to your investment on one that is connected to the grid, you're just getting much more bang for the buck out of that, that light connected to the grid. So don't get me wrong, I do think that there would be applications for it, you know, certainly bike paths, things like that. But I think in general, the system that would be bought from the utility is going to be your better investment.
Thank you. And then my second and last question for now is about light pollution. I do get occasionally concerns raised from residents about light pollution from our streetlights. So with, with the new system, you mentioned the smart technology and stuff. How would, how do, how do we address that? What, what are some common practices, best practices with that?
I'm concerned that the lights that are currently installed by the utility, at least the LEDs, they're too bright. The wattages are crazy big. And most utilities will do that because they want to keep your bills high. So it's not the light that you need. They're just trying to drive more energy through you so they can keep their bills high, because they have to pay their investors. So I could tell you, with any lights that we will be converting, it's this great nexus between the right amount of light and what makes sense for the cost that you're getting. There's a possibility of dimming those lights down. I think that should be studied to see for the cost savings, is it worth it for the cost of the dimming technology, potentially even replacing them. By going to all LED, you'll certainly maximize your nighttime uplighting, because LEDs do keep the light down. But the problem with some of the intensities of some of the lights that they do have is there is some photo reflectance off the ground, or certainly when it snows. I mean, my God, it just all goes back up. So it is something just to be concerned about long-term, but I think because the city would be the one in control, you're having the direct benefits of what lights you want to see reduced, and addressing the light pollution directly. Whereas right now, you just take whatever Excel gives you, and it's about what's best for them, and you just write the check. So you're going to have much greater control over that. But certainly LEDs, just moving forward, even on the, the current decorative post tops, that will reduce a lot of it, because the lighting is pointed down, even when there's like a side lens, the light is pointed down.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Marriott, you were next.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So you mentioned that we're in a lucky situation that Excel's willing to sell streetlights. Is that a legal requirement that's on them, or is that just a company policy?
I think that, you know, Golden really blazed the trail on that one. I think they fought a long time. I think they threatened a lot with eminent domain. But finally, I think Excel came up with the number that they could live with. So they're basically selling it to you with a profit, but I think that it works for them, and it keeps you happy. So I wouldn't say that this is like the most ideal situation. We, we will have to work with them, but at least it is at will from both sides. And I do feel it's advantageous.
Okay. And you may have answered the other question, and that is, there's no particular, like PUC regulation on the cost that they sell them to us for. We just have an idea what they're currently selling them for, and?
The, the foundation of their pricing is the book value, and that I'm happy about. That's what it should be based on. So they're at least alleviating their costs, and the PSC is going to want to see that they're covered, at least from that standpoint. They are adding additional charges to it. But when it comes to these kind of at-will sales, some of it is, well, is it worth fighting for it? Or, you know what, just get rid of the liability that you've got, and it's worth writing the check for. The rates of returns that you're getting are outstanding. I mean, in less than six years, you'll get your money back. So it really is, just get through the process and get your bills down.
Get it done, yeah. How has the, I guess, what I would call the service from Excel been, you know, when a, a, a streetlight that's out gets identified, you know, if you were to grade them, you know, either A through F or 1 through 10, you know, or what's?
I'd probably give them a C+ maybe. You know, their, their model is set up that streetlights are a way of generating revenue, which is their purpose. Their purpose is not to provide you with power. Their purpose is to make a return and pay their shareholders. So it's, I, I think some people are getting different experiences of, you know, hey, that light's been out for two years, or, hey, you know what, I called that one in, they got, they got it fixed the next day. So I think, I think overall, I'd say, you know, a C+, because they're probably average. That's really what I'm going after. I think this is just how utilities operate. They have no incentive to be proactive. They don't want to drive your town out. There's no, they're just spending money. So the reactive maintenance is really the least quality service you can get, but you're paying the highest price for it. So it's really divergent in terms of that. So, but they have the ability to pay the least amount and be proactive. I mean, that's a great option. But I'd say the average.
Yeah, okay. Do, do, I don't know how we would have any, you know, data on this, or even, even anecdotal data or gut feeling, but do you feel like Excel's meeting the customer's expectation, the resident's expectation with just the service side of it, notwithstanding the price or anything like that? But, you know, like, and, and here's what I'm getting at, is if we buy them and take over, there's this expectation that we perform at a certain level of customer service, and, you know, are we going to be able to do that? So you start with, how's Excel doing? And then is that meeting customers' expectations? Followed by then, what's our plan to do it? My hope would be at least equal, but better. And does that meet expectations as well?
Yeah, I'd say most people, I'd say, when it comes to public government, when no one's calling you, you're doing a lot right. No one's complaining. So, you know, no one's calling and saying, hey, guys, great job. You know, I, I know the public service. Unfortunately, you guys are doing a great job, and no one's saying it. So I'd say when it comes to, you know, Excel, I think the complaints are going to the city. There is a phone tree when it comes to Excel. There's really no way to hold Excel directly accountable. So I would say for most people, they're probably satisfied with what they have, but they also don't know the alternative or know what else is out there. I could tell you, the expectation that I would have for a maintenance program is that every light that is called in is fixed within seven days. And that would be a requirement even for the contractor. So that can be an expectation when somebody calls in. Now, you don't have to call Excel and turn in that light. You'll say, it'll be fixed by Friday. And then if it wasn't, okay, well, you know what? Excel's power is out. We got to call them, but they're on the way. They're gonna, they got to turn it on, and then the light should work. So you're going to have a better customer experience to the taxpayer, because you'll have more to say to them, and you'll have more of report, rather than, I turned it into Excel, I don't know when it'll get done.
Right, right. Okay. How competitive of a market is there for contractors to perform this work? In other words, if I were a streetlighting contractor, and I were watching this presentation, and I didn't feel like there was a super competitive market among contractors around here, I might be trying to get part of that savings that we're hoping to realize. Are there lots of contractors that the city can contract with to do the maintenance on it, or is that a very few number?
I feel, we've had this problem in every market where, if the utility is the monopoly on streetlights, the contractor market just isn't there. But it is sort of, it is sort of a food supply and, you know, the hunger. So as more lights have been turned over, I think you're seeing a better pool of contractors. The reality is that it's something that we would want to work with, any contractor who bids this and winds up being low, is training them. You know, what would they be involved in? You know, they're going to be working on these lights hot. I think that you're at a good spot right now, because it's as mature as it's ever been. And so I would expect, you know, what we really need is a genuine electrician and a bucket truck. And that's a great place to start. I think from there, you're really just looking to see how you can commoditize that cost and get the best value for that, and keep the cost down. We're not going to send them out to fix one light. We're going to send them out to fix seven lights.
And is that about the size of an operation that it would take to handle the city of Arvada stuff? I would assume after everything's converted, but is one guy and a bucket truck?
I think for the majority of it, yes. There will be knockdowns, which you're currently already paying for. That might be maybe larger crews. But in, in general, it, it could just be an electrician and an apprentice, or just an electrician and a bucket truck going up and just getting the light to work again. Your outage rate, we would expect post-LED, it should be maybe at 2%. So that would be roughly 140 lights a year. So you're talking about a light every three days, on average. Now, on average, that is more or less when lights are failing, but there is a cycle to it. In the summer, no one notices the lights are out. In the fall, after time change, all of a sudden, you get a bunch of calls in. So our busiest time is usually in the fall, through the new year, and into the first quarter, because that's when people are noticing the lights.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Thank you, Mayor. So questions, I just want to get into the money, because I do know a little bit about this. I'm assuming we had here in Arvada a fixed cost with Excel versus a metered rate. So fixed rate versus a metered rate?
That is a great question. Yeah.
Because that really drives a lot of these costs and behavior.
So currently, you could look this up on your phone right now. These are published rates. This is, I love the atmosphere I work in. It's all somebody else's numbers. So currently, the PSC goes through rate cases with its rates. This is currently on Excel's, I'd have to look up the rate code to be, to be clear on which one it is, but this is currently the published rate for this light. 100 watts, $13.77. That is regulated. They have to charge that. And then if you were to take over ownership, it's actually 87 cents is just the power. We're adding $2 in per poll per month for maintenance. So that's how that 287 is coming up. But if you look at it, 1387, all in from Excel, and then just energy only, it's 87 cents to work that 40-watt light. The maintenance is a larger cost. But just know, we have overestimated that $2. It will be underneath that. So.
So that's the high watermark on that?
Yes.
Yeah. I figured that, because let me, let me, let me give you more background for the council. The, the behavior that this creates between fixed and metered is, when you're paying a fixed rate of $13.77 and the light doesn't work, Excel doesn't care. They're still billing us. They're going to get their $13.77. So the service level drops dramatically. So if Mr. Marriott asked me what the rate would be, I'd give him an F, because I'm paying for something I did not get for months, or the community did not get for months. The ones that they repair fairly quick are the ones that are metered, because they want that fixed, because they are getting money for that one, and it's on a meter. This also applies with our traffic signals, too. This also applies with our traffic signals, too. And so this kind of gets into some other topics I'll bring up here in a minute. But I do appreciate Mr. Mormon bringing up the light pollution. I'm adamant about light pollution because when you see a community built with thoughtfulness around light, I've seen two extremes here. I live out in Canellas where there's probably minimal lights, only at intersections only, and that's it. No mid-blocks, nothing else. But then there's a community over here that was just built that has one like every 10 feet. It's like Excel thought, this is exciting, we can make a crap load of money, and the lights are extremely bright. I mean...
They are too bright.
It's melting the paint off the houses that were just built.
They are way too high wattage.
So this leads me to a couple of things. One is, I'm assuming, and I'll look to Dawn on this, a master plan would help us to understand what is right look like, right? I, I think there's middle ground, I think there's some thoughtfulness. What criteria creates the need for, not just public safety, it's, I mean, it's, it's helpful, but for driver safety, I guess it is safety at all levels. It's pedestrian and so forth. But also, it's very, very clear, I'll tell you, when I had a light outside of my window when I lived at the Valley Rainbow Ridge versus where I live now, I feel like my sleep pattern's a lot better than the light blaring in. So, you know, I hope in a master plan, we identify what right looks like. Second in there, I would also look at, you know, what is a standard design? Like, let's start standardizing these lights. I mean, we've got so many variety of lights that create different environments. You got those bright orange lights, you've got dome lights, you've got downward lights, you've got the luminaire type lights, you know, you've got decorative, it's just, it's all over the place. And I think that's where, I think there's really two things that identify a community. One is the medians in the landscape as you drive through your communities, but the other is even the lighting. I think lighting has a big play on how your community looks. I'm not saying we need decorative lighting or anything like that, but uniformity means something. It means we care. You know, when somebody mows their lawn, it looks like they care about their, their property. When you look at like, oh, they just randomly took an electric pole that has 15,000 wires off of it and threw it, slapped a luminaire on it, it just looks like half-assed, we just, somebody did something, you know? But if we put thoughtful and thoughtfulness into it, I think I would be excited around that because I think the lighting could identify a sense of community in place because I, for years, we've talked about putting our own flags up, identifying the events in the community, the Arvada Center events, you know, city civic events. And that, that, that can create community in smaller pockets of our neighborhoods that feel like they're part of something bigger. So hopefully, our master plan will feed into those as well. Hopefully, it also identifies removing lights. I think there's an opportunity to get rid of some lights because I could tell you that neighborhood over there, Dawn and I can go on our way one day and go through there, and you'll, one needs sunglasses at night. And we, there's a song for that, too. We can play in the car as we're driving. Then, when you talked about groups that can support contractors, there's actually a Arvada one, you know, Luminate WL Contractors is probably the most well-renowned signals and lighting company, contractor and surgeon, but they're minimal. I think you're right, if the market opens up, it changes. But what that leads to is hopefully in our master plan and our trajectory, I would encourage that we look at transitioning having our own techs because they can help signals and lights. And just like you said, it might only be a couple of techs that we need to do, or electricians. We are a large enough city now, I think we're starting to, we should consider maybe savings in that area as well. I don't know, I think, I don't know if Luminate still does ours, but I know they do a pretty good deal because they're here, but we should probably look at cost savings in there if there was a way to insource that. And then, you know, when you talk about like, there's a problem with Excel, I just want to make a comment around it, that the only way to hold Excel accountable, there was a comment around that, is for you as an individual or voter or citizen or constituent to go to the PUC and complain, and complain, and complain, and fight rate increases. Other than that, there is no other incentive whatsoever to do anything. And so there's no way to hold them accountable. PUC can if you get the right ear, the right person, the right investigator involved to do it, but they're probably overwhelmed with complaints throughout. So I just, I didn't have much questions, I just had comments around it. I'm absolutely for the direction you're taking. I don't know if you're asking now, but I won't mic up anymore. I was trying to drag it out to 6:20 so I can win a bet, but, but I will say, I'm for it. I've been for it. I don't know how long, Dawn, we've been talking about this, 10 years, eight years? I don't know, for a long time. But I've been for this. I think that this is something that should be within our control, and I think we would do a better job at. And I appreciate the fact that you're not growing government, you're just using, we're being smart about taxpayer dollars. And I appreciate that because I think that savings could be reinvested in that standard light fixture that identifies our community, or a roadway, or a specific area, or main road. You know, maybe we would have more say in what that looks like going down the road, no pun intended, but I appreciate that. And so I'm all supporting the direction you guys are going.
Councilmember Rupert.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things I'd like to explore a little bit about the remaining relationship with Excel as should this go forward. One is, are we still paying Excel for the use of the poles where we're mounting, or our, our light is mounted to their power line pole?
So under the current agreement, which unfortunately is contrary to state and federal law, they're saying that we have to take those lights down. But our plan is to fight that in the PSC at the next rate case and to have that removed. That is out of compliance. It is your right of way. You should be allowed to keep that light on there. They're doing that intentionally because that creates a barrier around you purchasing the system and makes it more expensive. They're saying you got to put it in your own pole. That is, that is not the way the law is set up. So I feel like that is winnable. We've seen that take place in other jurisdictions. I can't, there's hardly any like fees we've found nationally around this. Typically, the lights roll on the pole, it's, I mean, there's, there's more stress from their own wires and from communication than a streetlight. So we should, we should expect no cost, and currently, there is no cost on the rate for an attachment to a pole.
Okay. Do you have a, I'm sure you have in your account, a percentage of what lights are on independent poles versus powered lines?
Yes, yeah, that was what the audit was looking to see, was how many were on the utility poles and how many were standalone, so that's correct.
Will we, for those, become, did you want to add?
I'm sorry, yeah, if I can add, you, you made a comment about the relationship with Excel. And I think the council should know that really through Jaclyn Rhodes, our infrastructure director, she has done a great job of establishing a good relationship with the management team at Excel. We meet with them regularly. In fact, Linda and I met with them yesterday. I have been talking to them about the fact that we were looking at the acquisition. They have been giving us their feedback on that, of course. But we are interested in maintaining a positive relationship with Excel because we have other projects that we're working on, and not everything is streetlights and electricity, there's gas, too. So we do intend to maintain a positive relationship with them even going through this process.
All right, thanks. Will we become responsible for downed power lines? For example, we're not responsible for the power, I get that, but presumably, if a power line is down, the line to wire our lights will be down as well. Will that get corrected by Excel? Will we need to call our crews out? How will they...
So the, the point of demarcation between where our lights will attach to them is very close to their system. So if the light is out, there's a much bigger problem. So they would go back through making sure all the services are connected. So what's fortunate about streetlights is they're at the end of the line. We're not anticipating, you know, hundreds, thousands of feet of wire that will be acquired. There'll be clear demarcations of where the line ends, what would be city responsibility. That should also really be as part of the master plan. Ultimately, I'd want to see that minimized as much as possible so that as much underground is staying with utility and as little is going with the city. But that would be another point to cover in the master plans, when new lights go in, here's how it's going to get built. And then the contractor has to deal with Excel, and here's where our equipment gets located.
Actually, that's a pretty good tie to the next question, which is, when, when poles do have to get replaced, whether they got hit by a car, or they are just rotted, or they need to be moved, do our lights get moved with those poles? Is there a charge to us for that?
If it's, if it's going from distribution to distribution, there might be a relocation charge to, to move that light and have it, you know, essentially rebolted back to that pole. I don't know if there's currently an agreement or part of the agreement on how pole replacements would, would go. We've seen some jurisdictions where the utility will move it over, but I think that would need to be a clarification as part of the agreement. On the infrastructure that you own, the standalones, we call them, you know, where the pole's purpose is for the streetlight, that is solely your responsibility. So if you want to, you know, widen the street, or this pole's rusted out, that will be upon the city to, you know, prioritize that and then have that cost covered.
Sure. So I, I'm glad actually the current slides up. I am assuming the 1377 we pay out to them also pays for the advertised cost of the poles over time, they can replace them and whatnot. And I want to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples on the slides and the analysis in that, does the 287, the maintenance, include over time the necessity of replacing poles?
So the, the 1377, I don't know how much of a future cost that they're looking at in terms of their own replacement of infrastructure. And even if infrastructure is replaced, it's then reflected back into the rate, and then rates go up. I know that the offer that they have is the current depreciated value. The benefit of what we're getting here is lights that are worth thousands of dollars, and really, we're only have to pay a few hundred dollars for them. I think it's between $600 and $700, so excuse me, $600 to $700 for that light. So we are definitely getting really good infrastructure already at a discount. And the reason why it's at a discount is that developers have already paid for the majority of the street lighting already. The streetlight goes in, it's $10,000. Excel only contributed a little bit amount. It was on the developer to pay the remaining amount. Now, going forward, we want the developer to pay everything. So the city won't contribute, but that's, that is the benefit that you're getting, is that you're getting very expensive infrastructure that really even Excel didn't invest heavily into, so...
I just want to make sure that we are not buying into a surprise cost lag down the road when we need to replace something.
We haven't seen any like large event, you know, even, let's say we even convert all the lights to LED now. They have a rated life of 25 years. 25 years out in the future, there's no big replacement. And even the existing lighting now, the high-pressure sodium, that orange light, that's already at its end of life, but yet there's no spike in any of the curves in terms of, you know, extra outages, things like that.
Sure.
But it will need to be looked at probably from a capital need from year to year, is are there problem areas, or will these lights need to be replaced? Well, we're going to road widen anyway, you know, so you're starting to see it as, okay, we're going to kill two birds with one stone, we had to redo the road anyway, you know, that kind of thing.
Thanks. Yeah. So, yeah, it's a great question. Thank you for asking that. Our team, that's also a concern that they have is, you know, will we need to either have like an inventory of poles, for example, or, you know, would we have to have some replacement built into that? I think that we're actually going to know the answer to that as we get into this next phase. We'll be able to better answer the question about what is it that we're going to need for either inventory or, you know, an available fund to be able to do that replacement. So I think we'll be able to answer that question when we come back to you in the next part.
Thank you. That's all I've got.
I, I would add, the benefit here is Excel had to put in good enough quality even for them. They didn't want to bleed to death. So that's a benefit that you're getting. They didn't want to put in something that was so cheap and so poorly constructed, they would get eaten alive on the backside. So really seeing it from that standpoint, you're really getting a great benefit. You're getting a lot of this infrastructure, these poles are ready to last 100 years or more, so...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. And thanks, Councilmember Rupert. You covered both of my questions, so I appreciate it. All right, Councilmember Ambrose.
Could you go back to the slide that has the options?
Yeah. Is that the one?
I think so, yeah. So I don't really have any questions, but if the team is looking for direction from council, I'd go ahead with option two and proceed with the process.
All right, Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you. I, too, will be, would like to see us proceed with option two. I did have a clarifying question on customer service. So I, you know, I have experience in my neighborhood in particular, a streetlight being out for like two years or more and trying to get that repaired. And so I was, I was really interested in, in some of the comments you said about the new smart technology that would tell either the city or whoever's maintaining our lights under this new program when a light goes out so that they could be fixed. Did I understand that correctly, or are we still...
That is correct. There is some technology that can do that. My concern is the cost of that.
Oh, okay.
There is fees affiliated with it. I've also seen some of the, the photocells, that's a little switch that turns the light on and off. Some years out there, not lasting as long. So what I'm trying to do with all of our advice is hedge, hedge your bets for the future, is to really look at where's the best bang for the buck. If we can reduce average outages down to 2% or less, all of a sudden, putting in a system to look for outages really isn't as practical. I think if we had more outages, it would make more sense to have more detection.